I think we call this meeting Monday, June 26th to order. We have Counselor Ross on the phone with us this week participating. Welcome, Counselor Ross.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hello, Counselor.
Okay, before we get into the meat of the agenda, we're going to start off with item 2A, which is the annual report, corporate office report, the annual report 2016. Subject matter, 2016 annual report, consideration of the report and submissions and questions from the public. This is a portion of the agenda where the public will be able to participate. Once we adopt the agenda, then we're back to regular meeting. So the recommendation is resolved, the council receives the 2016 annual report and considers submissions and questions from the public. May I have a mover, please? Counselor Thompson, a second. Counselor Tripp. Okay. Ready to roll.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. This should look by and large familiar in format to last year. With a little bit of a tweak to it in that I changed the background and of course the contents. But as you can see, the sections follow the same way as last year. We have a few messages, an overview of our strategic objectives, and an outline by department, which should also look fairly familiar because we saw most of that content during the budget process for the objectives for the departments. And followed by a couple of forenologies at the end. And then, for some people, the meat of the matter being the audited financial statements. So I will breeze through as it's quite large. And I hope that folks have highlighted their questions or comments as we go through and to bring them up at that point. And I'll just start rolling, so please stop me at any time. I'll point out the lovely zar escaping from last year that this year you'll notice it going again. And I think it's just an awesome highlight of what you can do with a little bit of creativity. This should look really familiar because it's the strategic plan in a different format. A bit of a report on what we're doing. A few things that have been multi-year projects like the Telus partnership there. One of the highlights of the summer is having some GIS students in. So it's been great getting them out and about. It's with some data collection and correction. You'll see quite a bit of the event stuff in this section here. And of course, we are still in the midst of the sustainable or the official community plan review. That will be ongoing for the next while. Just highlight that that is very important to get engagement and input from the public for that process as well.
Just a question.
Counselor Thompson, go ahead.
Are we going to rename that from the sustainable community plan back to an official community plan? Is that the intent?
To our CAO.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. I believe, Your Worship, that is the plan, is we're going to put it back to the OCP because it's kind of in best practices as far as all the other communities do. And I think it likely is a bit confusing when ours is named a little bit different. People will think that there's two different voices, so I guess it's going to go back to the OCP.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question on this page?
Counselor Butler.
Thanks, I've been really interested in that learning garden coming along up at the pool. And I'm just wondering what's got installed and how we can encourage them to get working on it again, if there's anything that they need help with, and who's actually managing the project.
Mr. Gates.
It's been stalled largely just through time commitment and getting a group of volunteers to do some of the work. So it is moving forward. We do have the first treason this year. And yeah, so we are squawking half for some of the participants in the learning garden. And it is continuing to be built out according to the plan, but it is going fairly slowly. But there is some forward momentum this year.
Who's in charge of that?
Can I speak to that?
Yeah.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so it's Colleen and Ross, I'm speaking about the learning garden because I've been a part of it. Basically, it's lack of volunteerism. People have been just exhausted, it's not getting enough boots on the ground or shovels in the dirt. So if anybody is interested in participating, we could use more help. It's a lot of work putting the learning garden together, and it's particularly because of the models that we're using. And it's basically just trying to get more people out there to help. It's the same old, the same folks that showing up week after week or whenever we can get together. And I've been really bad at it myself, and I've got some hard run, and other things. Volunteer burnout.
We lost you for a bit there, Counselor Ross, but...
I guess I can say that we volunteer burnout. If there's anybody who's listening right now who wants to put a shovel in the ground, then uh-huh. You know, there's a lot of people who are, you know, people are really enthusiastic about it, but not enough people are joining up to participate. It's their own story, volunteer burnout.
So we're writing that...
And people are, it's untamed labor, which is exploiting people to do this great work. But I know that a lot of people that are working have young families, they have full-time jobs, they have their own homes and yards to maintain. They love what they're doing, they love the idea around it, but they're burning out too. So if everybody did a little bit, then what would get done?
Thank you. Would I comment? Counselor Thompson, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Just one other quick question. The community garden and representation, is that still being utilized and do we oversee that? Or is there someone that oversees it? Because I know the last time I was in that area, it looked pretty, it had been maintained or kept up very well. And who am I to talk to about no gardener?
It's a volunteer group.
Is it all volunteer?
Mr. Gates.
Oh, Mr. Watts. Should the mayor, thank you. So the coordinator for the community garden is Jessica Mace. And the Kettle River Community Garden, I think, is available on Facebook. They do have weekly work parties as well. I was actually over there the other day for city work, and I noticed it had been remedied and probably three-quarters of the beds were well-used, so I was happy to see that it was continually being used.
So we're learning as called rightfully called the learning garden, we're learning it's a lot over here. Gentlemen in the third row.
Peter Matheson. Just on the learning garden, we actually have had a fair amount of volunteer effort. We've had a class from the high school come once a week with about 16 students that have been participating in building and the gardening of it. The Piranha Swim team has taken over a couple of the raised beds. And every Saturday morning, Saturday morning, yeah, Saturday morning at 8:30, we have a work party and volunteers come out. Sometimes we have eight or 10, and other times we have four or five. But the building is being completed. Actually, lots of work is being done, but it is extremely slow. Because it's such a big project, it doesn't show up as much. The maytees are involved with the medicine wheel, so there are a lot of people involved in it. It's just a matter of keeping the boots on the ground. And we have a meeting tomorrow actually to look at, looking at funding to get somebody to manage it for the summer and how to get more people involved, so.
Did you catch all of that, Counselor Ross?
None of it.
That's what I suspected. We'll try to get everybody on a mic.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
And of course, a special welcome to my head, that's our CAO for this section. And another couple of new faces. It was noted before, but in 2017, we have already exceeded this permit value. Another major effort last year was the unsightly properties. And as you can see, quantified here, 56 out of the 2,000 or some odd that are in Grand Forks is quite a bit of work that was done by our bylaw officer. And also quite a good bit of participation from the property owners who did actually work on their properties to bring them up to the standard. Of course, we're highlighting the new fire truck as truck as much as we can. Because it helps with things like this. This, of course, is the mighty truck, the collector truck. And its nickname is Flash.
Poxie of...
Soapport kilometers.
You know, this is a spiritual that I really appreciate because you forget what you've done.
So that's the end of the main report. The next section is the audited financial statements, which, Juliette, did you have anything to speak to in them?
Not at this time now, because we actually had the regular meeting and the financial statements were presented there. Unless there's some short questions I ask from the audience.
Seeing none.
Thank you.
Okay, did we have any questions from anyone? Hearing none. Ian, the third row.
Gloria Cook here. This is a lot of information to take in, and maybe many have not had a chance to...
And you mic'd this person?
Yes, sir.
If I would repeat, sir, answer a question would be fine.
This is a lot of information to take in for everyone, and maybe the first time some who've known of it or seen it. Could public ask questions in the future about any of these things on this report?
I would imagine so. As long as it's submitted to the city, I'm sure they will get a response.
I mean at a meeting.
At a meeting.
At open meeting.
Well, unless it's part of our agenda, but...
You can ask at the COTW meetings on any topic.
Okay, that would be good.
To our CAO.
Thank you.
And, Your Worship, these reports were put out to the public two weeks prior to the meeting, as legislatively required, so they were at the front counter and so, you know, gave the opportunity for members of the public to actually pick them up during that time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of receiving? Anyone opposed? So carried. Okay, moving on to the meat of the agenda right now, we move on to the adoption of the agenda. And having said that, I have an amendment to the agenda as a late item, seeing as to amend the agenda to include a verbal statement from the mayor regarding the city's position on a complaint issue. May I have a mover, please? Counselor Thompson, a second. Counselor Hammid. All those in favor of the amendment? Anyone opposed? Counselor Tripp and Counselor Butler are opposed. Motion's carried. May I have a mover for the adopted, amended agenda? Counselor Thompson, second. Counselor Hammid. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Counselor Tripp and Counselor Butler are opposed. Okay, moving on to the minutes. Item 5A, registered petitions and delegations, Get in the Loop, the mobile marketing platform. The recommendation is, subject matter is the council's consideration to extend the Get in the Loop initiative for an additional six months from July 1st, 2017 to December 31st, 2017. Recommendation is council receives the delegation and the presentation from Get in the Loop and further that council decides if they wish to direct staff to proceed with the second six-month period of collaboration with Get in the Loop marketing initiative for the city of Grand Forks from July 1st, 2017 to December 31st, 2017 in the amount of $7,500. May I have a mover, please? Counselor Hammid, a second. Counselor Thompson. We have our presenters, there should be a video, I believe, right?
Yeah.
And they will be corresponding through Skype?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we're going to try to call them right now.
Okay, thank you.
Hello.
Hi, Mitch. You're on with our council here.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me.
Yeah, it's from...
The wonders of technology, I could be sitting in Kelowna, you guys can be down in Grand Forks. And I passed along a video, and I know Daniel had just said you guys hadn't seen it, and we thought we would leave it to you guys if you, it's about a five-minute video if you had wanted to watch it now or after. I hadn't really prepared anything besides the video, and I also wanted to just answer any questions with regards to Get in the Loop, which we've also passed a document along for review and have worked the past six months with Kevin and the team at the city of Grand Forks.
Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. From the information that I read, I'm not sure what the deliverables were for the city, like the benefits that we have received. That wasn't clear to me, so are you able to comment on that?
So from the city's perspective, or what we've done on behalf of the city, and it should be in the document there with regards to the number of people that we've connected with, so we use this more as a branding tool with Get in Loop, is we have hundreds of thousands of people in our database, and we share different types of information with them with regards to the events that were happening in the city of Grand Forks. And then, I guess, the most recent one would be the international baseball tournament coming up, Canafest that's being marketed, different weekend getaways and packages, the skiing days. So on behalf of Grand Forks, what we did is we shared this information out to our database of people, which is through our mobile application, our email, our website, as well as we created content to be shared and promoted through paid advertising, through digital channels, Google, Facebook, Instagram, as well as some of our other content creators and sharers. So the deliverables on behalf of the city of Grand Forks through Get in the Loop were getting the name and some of the events and things going on in Grand Forks in front of people across British Columbia and Alberta.
Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. So the Get in the Loop, if I read it correctly, that it's some 96,000 people that have viewed this?
So I'm just going to open up that specific document. One of them has nine, so 96,000, that would have just been in the snapshot of time, or at that, if that was a specific week. So we're well above that over the course of the, over the course of the partnership working with you guys. So on a weekly basis, we, right now, it'd be over 200,000 or 300,000 people just based on our app and some of the social engagement, of people who have engaged.
Thank you.
Counselor Tripp.
Thank you, Mayor Congress. Yeah, I was just wondering, you had said that it was many communities in DC and then some into Alberta. I just was wondering if you were aware of the exposure was going in farther than that and possibly internationally.
So our main focus, our main focus right now is British Columbia and Alberta. Get in the Loop is, what we typically do is we set up in cities, we're all across British Columbia and Alberta, we're not getting to the United States. Now, that's not to say some of the content such as any of the Facebook or blogs or stories that we write on behalf of Grand Forks aren't shared or seen or searched by people down there. But the majority of our database are people from Alberta and British Columbia.
Thank you.
Go ahead, carry on, Mitch.
Yeah, and so then, on behalf of, and if you have the document there, what we've really done is just tried to tell stories and highlight Grand Forks in the best way possible using a variety of different media channels, which include our mobile application with the hat, which has nearly 100,000 people who have opted in to receive information from across British Columbia and Alberta. We use Facebook, Instagram, Twitter to share and write content. This is about getaway to Grand Forks, discover Grand Forks, events that are happening in the city. And then we share that through also content marketing with some of our partners who also reshare the information out through their channels as well, just to extend the reach. So on a weekly basis or a monthly basis, we work with Kevin. And what that, and what we do with him is we come up with content that, based on the events that you guys have going on in the city, we share it through our channels. And those also include, we're a partner of Bell Media and the Jim Patterson Broadcast Group, so our audience signs up for Get in the Loop because they want to know about different things that's happening across British Columbia. And when we initially started the partnership with the city of Grand Forks, we thought this would be a great avenue to reach people in other cities from Victoria up to Edmonton, to share some of the stories and some of the things that are happening in Grand Forks, about the business, about the culture, and some of the reasons why they should come and visit, whether it's in summertime to do the camping or in the wintertime to do some of the skiing. And then on the document that is passed, if you guys can follow up, I made a little short video which would have highlighted some of this as well. And if any businesses or organizations such as yourself looking to do any type of marketing or exposure, a lot of what they go on is they do a cost per thousand, what is the cost to get in front of 1,000 people? And this could be whether it's display banners on, up here in Kelowna, it's called Castanet or Kelowna Now, or any type of website, or email banners, or social media. Get in the Loop's cost per thousand to reach is significantly lower than a lot of the other channels, which is Facebook, Google, Twitter, newspapers, or online banners. And the reason we can do this is we have our own database of people that we continually grow, and we also invest our own monies into attracting and getting in front of new people. So we also use Facebook, Google, Twitter, radio, newspaper, and online banners to grow the Get in the Loop database on a daily basis. So the benefit for the city of Grand Forks is they get to utilize all of our marketing channels that we use, and we co-market ourselves together to get in front of new people. So the cost per thousand to use Get in the Loop is significantly lower than the other ones because we combine them all together and we have our own database. And we also then use our monies to market the city of Grand Forks through our channels that we're even, we're marketing Get in the Loop with. And what the benefit to this, or for some of the businesses, and the reason why we found it a success, is it's an opportunity still to connect with people with how they want to be communicated with. I personally, I'm, I have my phone on me, I do my email from my phone, so I personally consume a lot of my content through email or Twitter, whereas other friends of mine or coworkers are through Facebook, or they go online to read on one of the news sites from around town. So with Get in the Loop is, we get Grand Forks in front of people through a variety of different media channels, online. And with this is its opportunity to highlight your city and your community to locals from all across British Columbia and Alberta.
Counselor Butler. Counselor Frogg after that.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, it's Mr. Drexler. Are we able to watch that five-minute video now and then possibly ask Mitch some questions after that?
Counselor Frogg.
Yeah, through you to Mitch, do you not track the, like, I see some numbers here, the 94,000 in a week, but that's, I'm assuming, your area. Do we know how many, if it was a website, how many hits or how many contacts there have been specifically for the city of Grand Forks?
So those are, those are all your numbers? So if I wanted to break them down from, so what we base ours on is total reach, response, and conversion, so I could, so any of those numbers there are specifically your numbers of the information. And the information could have been presented in a variety of different ways, but the majority of them are just being seen on our app or through our social channels. And those are just specific to Grand Forks, if that answers your question. Those aren't Get in the Loop as a whole, those are just... Those are just the number of times someone has looked at a Grand Forks piece of content or flipped through to one of your blog pages that's hosted on our site, or looked at some of the information on our app that was designed with your team that is strictly and only Grand Forks related. If that answers your question.
So the 96,140 in a week? Cause it says last seven days.
Yeah, yeah. So on those weeks, so what we do is every day, so at this time, I use an example, I'm just, and you can kinda see it in this video if you watch it. So this past week, we posted two new things on our app and our website. One was Canafest and the other one was the baseball tournament. And so what we do when we take that information is we present it in a few different ways to our, to our members. One of them's through the email and one of them's through our application, and of course on the website and through social platforms. But because we had two different pieces of content, one being baseball, one being a music event, we created two different stories that went out two or three different times with different images to ensure that we're connecting with all of our database, to ensure that people are looking at it, and trying to engage with people who either might be interested in music or might be interested in sports. And then when we take that information is, we send it, so we have, our, our members are from Victoria to Edmonton, so in each little cluster, there's different databases of people. And we'll, for example, is if you send something out to Kelowna today, it's gonna get in front of anywhere from 20,000 to 30,000 people, depending on how they consume their information. And over the course of the week, it might be 30,000 to 40,000, just if they don't open up the app or look at it specifically.
We're gonna run the video now, Mitch.
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you for watching. My name is Mitch Carefoot and I'm going to take you through the partnership between the city of Grand Forks and Get in the Loop Marketing, a partner of Bell Media and the Jim Patterson Broadcast Group. In this short video, I will quickly summarize what Get in the Loop is and how it works. The media and channels we use to promote the city of Grand Forks and events. A recent example of events and activities we work together with Kevin from the city of Grand Forks. I will highlight the forecasted and expected results and compare them to other media channels. Then I will summarize the partnership and why we are a great partner for the city of Grand Forks and the next steps to improve upon our early success. For some of you, this might be a review, for others, this might be new. So what is Get in the Loop? Get in the Loop is a mobile and digital marketing service that connects businesses, brands, and organizations with a targeted audience through a mobile app and media channels. Through our mobile app, organizations such as the city of Grand Forks, on the left, you see they can create content and send it through our app to be received by Loop members shown on the right. These consumers across British Columbia who have opted in to receive content from Get in the Loop because they want to know what is happening and are active, social, and adventurous. Once a consumer receives the content, they can view it in more detail and follow the instructions based on the information provided. For the city of Grand Forks, this allows you to get in front of a new audience, to build awareness of the events, activities, and the things the city has to offer with people from all across British Columbia. The team at Get in the Loop works with the city of Grand Forks to come up with compelling and engaging content to share with our members and audience. Once we have created the content to be promoted, we use a variety of channels to build awareness for the city of Grand Forks. Get in the Loop uses a multi-channel marketing strategy to interact with consumers on various platforms such as mobile app, email, mobile website, and social media to deliver content and engage consumers across the Okanagan, British Columbia, and Alberta. We do this by sending notifications to Loop members who have opted in to receive them on their phone, as shown on the left. The promotion is also listed in our app for Loop members to see, read, and learn about, as shown on the right. We use display banners for added exposure through our app and website, as shown here. The content is also sent out to our email subscribers who prefer to receive and consume information through their email. We also use display banner ads that link through to grandfork.ca or a specific blog piece we might have designed to promote the city of Grand Forks and the region. Using multiple channels to promote the city of Grand Forks allows Get in the Loop to take advantage of the different engagement habits each channel provides. This is why we also put a big emphasis on social media as well. We posted and promoted content about Grand Forks through Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and each had great success. We told stories about the region and area with different activities and events happening, as well as the culture and things to do in the area that were shared by other media channels as well. I wanted to highlight a recent example just from this past week, from information received from Kevin about Canafest and the international baseball tournament. We received this information on June 20th. By June 21st, it was sent to our members through our app, iPhone, email, and on the website. In the next few weeks after our partnership is extended, we would add on additional media promotions through social media and blogging content to be shared and promoted across British Columbia because we know people love classic rock and baseball. At Get in the Loop, we do our best to turn things around fast to service our big clients like the city of Grand Forks. Organizations like working with Get in the Loop not only because of the speed at which we work, but also because all of the initiatives we undertake are trackable and measurable. We can tell you how many people have seen and engaged with your content and we share it with you. These forecasted numbers are based on the past six months partnership with Get in the Loop. These numbers are for one month. The important thing to note is the cost per thousand at the bottom is 5.7. It is less than most other marketing channels are shown here, and the benefits to the city of Grand Forks is using the different Get in the Loop channels to connect with different audiences based on individual habits. We use many of these same channels as well. So to quickly summarize, Get in the Loop is a great way to connect, engage, and educate consumers from across B.C. about the city of Grand Forks through timely messages sent to their phones or email. With Get in the Loop, Grand Forks receives the benefit of using multiple media channels such as app, email, website, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and content marketing to engage with new audiences. Grand Forks can quickly reach consumers from across British Columbia with the Get in the Loop marketing services. And our services are the most cost-effective marketing tool available, and it even combines many of the other channels businesses might consider. We become a marketing tool to promote the city of Grand Forks at a cost-effective rate and it is trackable and measurable. What do the next steps look like? The next steps to continue the partnership would be to pass along any questions to Diane or myself. You can email me at mitch.carefoot@getintheloop.ca. We will then hold a Q&amp;A session on June 26 at 7:00 P.M. where I will call in. Shortly down the road, if the partnership is confirmed, we will start planning and scheduling the marketing plan. Thank you for listening. I hope you learned how Get in the Loop helps the city of Grand Forks and the value Get in the Loop provides. I look forward to discussing in more detail next week.
Thank you, Mitch. Do we have any questions? Counselor Butter.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just quickly went on Facebook here.
Welcome to our guide to creating great offers at work. This is one of us.
I'm looking at the Get in the Loop Facebook page and searched the page for Grand Forks and just came up with two posts for Grand Forks, one from February and one from March. And they don't seem to have had a lot of hits on them. One of them has six likes, the other one has 10. So I'm just wondering, is there more marketing that's done on Facebook that I'm missing? Or is this all that's been done this year?
We would have another page called In the Loop as well. I would have to look, I guess the likes would be reflected of the one. And then the other is we put paid advertising behind it as well, so it wouldn't be on our, it wouldn't show on our, so when we promote it through our paid channel, it wouldn't show up on our page. That would be another, that we promoted some of those same content or other content.
Any other questions? Okay, having said that, thank you for the presentation, Mitch. And I'm going to call a question right now. Just wanna talk some more? Go ahead, yeah. Counselor Hammett.
When we're alone?
Oh.
Sorry, Mitch.
No problem at all. I very much appreciate your time. If there are any other questions, please do not hesitate. My email's on there as well. And yeah, I definitely wanna be transparent and work with you guys moving forward. So if there's anything that pops up, please just reach out if anything's done.
Will, Mitch, thank you once again, and have yourself a rest and a great evening.
All right, you guys too. Take care. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Hammett.
Yeah, I saw a sample out of this probably last fall on how it could work for a community, but I don't remember it ever being contracted. This is the first, unless I've missed a council meeting where this was presented, and this is the first I've known that Grand Forks is actually engaged in this. I haven't had an opportunity to apply for an app or see an app. I would have downloaded the app to see what was going on. This is a little different than the one I saw that when a demonstration was put through that I saw, where it would be specifically for Grand Forks and the concept, and it could be something totally different, but I know it was Get in the Loop, was for Grand Forks. And they presented a concept where business members would buy in a membership. And then at any given time, at any given day, any of the members, say Realco's decided that for half an hour, they were gonna put apples on for five cents a pound, they could quickly put it on their app and it would go out to all the members. If Wooden Spoon wanted to have a lunch special, they could post it on there. But it was a paid membership for all the businesses in Grand Forks, specific to Grand Forks. And members in the community could get the app for free, right? But the business community would be paying for this app by their membership to be able to go in and promote their sales or minute, you know, five minute sales, or half an hour sales, or lunch specials, or whatever. But this is something like Thompson Okanagan Tourism is posting on their website and on their social media and other avenues that we have for marketing our area, but I didn't realize we were doing such a broad spectrum marketing that hasn't targeted the people of Grand Forks to get in on it. Cause I haven't seen anywhere or read any communication that said, "Get your app now." And so I'm just wondering when all this developed.
Right, our CEO, you're absolutely correct because the same presentation was put at the regional table, where the merchants and the vendors and all the businesses downtown would engage in this.
Right.
I remember when our former CEO, Mr. Allen, was present, it was the presentation made by them and there was a discussion on that kind of concept. But I'll let our CEO elaborate a little more on that.
Thank you, Worship. Yes, so the previous administrator did a six-month contract with the Get in the Loop as a project. It was much the same as what they did for the billboard that went to Kelowna. It was just a test piece, just to see exactly how it would work. And so that went from January 1st to June 30th. And so this presentation is just intended for council to take a really good look at it, to see if this is something we wish to continue, or perhaps there might be something else that might be more subjective for the city. I don't know, we won't have our own database, so.
Yeah.
The question I have, is there any, has there been any approach to any of the merchants and the businesses as far as engagement goes by Get in the Loop? The question Mitch did not mention anything of the sort.
Your worship, I'm not sure exactly what happened back in the day when the first six months, so I'm not sure what the engagement was. I don't know if perhaps Mr. Gates has any idea on that, or maybe Mr. Drexler's got his finger up there, so he might have a little bit of an idea.
Because they conveyed a completely different model at the onslaught of this when this first came into Grand Forks. Also at the regional table, there was a completely different model presented where the merchants would have a say in this. So in other words, if you were at a golf course, for instance, and there was five 50-cent wings, you'd have it on your phone by the time you got back to the clubhouse, or you'd speed up your game to get there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so I was involved in the initial discussions with Get in the Loop and the idea behind it, but we were trying to accomplish is use it more as an economic development piece to potentially bring Kelowna, Okanagan, Castlecar residents to see the app more than necessarily in here to bring them in for events, to basically bring a crowd to town and make something happen in that way, and then in the economic development side of things, not necessarily pushing it onto this town. From Mr. Gates and I have talked about this too, our communities, business community, might not be on the same level where Kelowna is at, for example, right now, when pushing the promotions, the social media awareness, and all of those things. So this might be two years, three years ahead for our current businesses, but it would definitely help in an idea of bringing outside people to Grand Forks, like a way of advertising, basically, for the community.
Yeah, that concept was there at that time too, where we would promote economic development and so to speak, put Grand Forks on the map, so to speak, outing Kelowna and other areas. But at the same time, the model also depicted the fact that local merchants and businesses could get involved. And my question still remains the same is, did Mitch approach any of the businesses downtown? Because they might be interested, but one will never know if they're not asked. This is a question I have, did he do that? So maybe that's a question staff could put to him. Counselor Hammett.
Yes, I see two parts to this. One is the broader reach, which is what we're looking at, that isn't involving the locals as much or the local businesses. It's not more, it's not a hands-on our piece. This is more of an economic development piece. And I'm wondering, since it was presented to the board of the Economic Development Committee, and we pay into that, should this not be something that's coming out of economic development? And then Grand Forks can worry about its Grand Forks? I know we, you know, we partner with them on this, but this sounds like it's a much broader deal than just the city. And it's not what I was under the impression of.
At the best of my knowledge, Regional has not acted on this yet because I believe there was a brief discussion on it, and I think it's on one of their line items as far as uncompleted tasks, but there's nothing concrete. So I'm just wondering if Mitch also did a presentation to the board again, and if they are on board or if you decided not to be, I have no awareness of that. Counselor Thompson.
Yes, thank you, your worship. To you, to our staff, I would be interested in hearing from them if there's any measurements that they have, that this is valued for money, or other comments that they might have in this regard, recommendations? I mean, it sounds good on the surface, but. Yeah, exactly.
It's a good marketing tool, but is it really turning over results to any degree? Counselor Frogg.
Yeah, on their one page, their actual webpage, there's the two ads that he talked about, Canafest and Grand Forks. And I would question 96,000 people in a week. And then I'm wondering, is this like spam? Right? Like how many people, they've signed up for the app, but have they filtered it out and said, "I only want this," or can you even filter it? Or is it just spam, spam, spam? Right? So I would have concern over that. So what? Quit, yeah. Through us to, through you, through us, through you, back to them, to Gavin and the other guy. I was gonna look. I was gonna look. Okay. Anyway, it's the other guy. What, what they think if it's been a banner? What they think, if it's been a benefit, or we're not sure yet, or whatever. So that could go through to staff.
Any comments?
Is it good?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To put the cost in context for advertising the city, this roughly would consume the entire budget that we normally put towards advertising in terms of Grand Forks specifically, and not including our partnership with the BEDC, of course.
Counselor Hemmett?
Is this something that needs to be renewed right away, or really we have problems, if there's a couple of months delay, and we get back to it? And is this something that we can sit down and discuss with the staff, or have staff give us more stats? And, you know, this is my first introduction to this, especially in this format. And so I'd like to see some results. I'd like to know who's seeing it, how many people in Grand Forks are seeing it. I know we're trying to bring people in from out of area, but that still seems to me like a business of BEDC agenda that, you know, we're partnered with. But I'd just like to explore more of it before I commit.
Worship, CEO?
Your Worship, likely what could happen is that because the expiry date, that's why we brought it in, as we did, you know, it would be council's prerogative to put it on hold, and maybe revisit it in six months or something. I'm not sure exactly what the timeline is. I think that what happens is that the content in the back will have, it'll likely disappear, they have to kind of be rebuilt. But it might be something that might be more of a collaborative, as far as, you know, working with the businesses downtown, and the economic development piece for community futures, and the city, and perhaps Regional. So it's something that, you know, council can choose to look at in another six months to see if they're ready to consider something like that.
More research. Counselor Tripp, and Counselor Thompson, and Counselor Crogg.
Thank you, Mayor Pramath. Yeah, I'm getting the feeling that staff see some value in this. And specifically that comment about if that's our entire budget. And I really think that it's important for Grand Forks to, you know, for the word to get out there of all the fantastic things that go on around here, especially during the summer. And I mean, we've got the snowbirds coming, we've got the Fall Fair, which is going to have the, what do you call it?
Demolition.
Demolition Derby, you know, and different things. So I think, I think these folks are telling us that it's probably 7,500 will spend. So I would be willing to go for this for the summer with the real, just letting them know that we really want to push on some of these big events that are coming through here this summer. That would be my take.
I have a question before Counselor Thompson. Did I interpret that right, when you said that would consume our entire budget? So is that a negative statement in regards to the cost of this? Or a positive statement? I interpret it as a negative statement.
It would be a scenario of putting all of the city's eggs in one basket.
Okay, so it was.
And would reduce the flexibility in terms of marketing opportunities.
So I did interpret it right, okay.
That was my question.
Counselor Hemmett, sorry, Counselor Crogg first, and then Counselor?
Yeah, on their main page, I think what's missing, like I can understand why we started, and we're kind of focusing on getting it out there, but the big part that's missing is, is the business part. When you go to Get in the Loop, and you click on offers near you, it pops up with Kelowna, and then you scan all the way down, you have Parks Bill, Comox, blah, 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 then you're in Alberta, Manitoba. So nothing on Grand Forks. But it has, there's tons for Kelowna and stuff like that, and they pop up as ads for a pizza place, or Transmission, or whatever. And they're not even daily specials. They're, you know, it's just standard to get people in.
So they haven't promoted the downtown art businesses at all?
Yeah.
This is an element that I really looked into.
That's the part that's missing, right?
I have one other quick question before Counselor Hemmett. It's 7,500 for the second half. Was the first half also the same price at 7,500?
We had an introductory rate for the first six months of 5,000.
So a grand total of 12,500 for a whole year, then it would represent?
And I would imagine that ongoing, it would be 15,000.
17,000, okay. Counselor Hemmett?
Yeah, I'm really not seeing a whole lot of the value here. In order to find Grand Forks, the closest one you can click on is Kelowna. And you scroll through hundreds of offers from places in Kelowna, and then you find two Grand Forks ones that says, "Grand Forks International Baseball Tournament, Sunday to Wednesday." Well, the dates are on first of all. And then Canfest, Monday to Sunday. So they've got two items, two events opposed to Grand Forks, and neither of them have the actual dates on them, and they're on days of the week. We also have the airshow, we have the Fall Fair, we have Park in the Park. I mean, we have a ton of activities that should also be on here as well, but aren't. So I'm not seeing very good, I don't think it's good value for our money at this point. And I think there's other ways that we could market ourselves and get information out there. Even our own, our Facebook page and our city website, Thompson Okanagan Tourism will take information for free, and they don't charge us. So just saying.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, I think we might have to amend this resolution, because we already have, when we're in a seconder on it, we could receive delegation presentation. But on regards to making a decision, if we'd like to refer it back to staff, I could have a council make that, unless I'm wrong what I'm hearing. Counselor Butler?
Yeah, I'd be willing to make that motion, to amend the original motion, to just receive for information, and direct it back to staff for more information.
I thought we should, my motion was to receive.
Okay, no, there's any further that council decides if they wish to direct staff to continue with another six months, if I'm wrong there. To our CEO?
And your worship, in order for us to actually pursue this, we would have to have it done in the next four days if we were going to continue on. So it might be better that at this point in time, that council can decide not to direct staff to proceed with the next six months, and do some further research down the road, and maybe with some partnerships with other organizations within town, prior to coming back.
Okay, so now we have an amended motion on there, which was seconded.
Who's the concurrent?
I mean.
Was the concurrence of the seconder, or was it probably motion? Who seconded?
Counselor Ross seconded the amended motion.
It was Counselor Hemmett who reported the motion. Counselor Thompson seconded.
Yes, the original motion.
The original motion.
But then we had an amended motion from Counselor Butler, seconded by Counselor Ross, which amended it to the fact to send it back to staff for further review. So at this point, I feel the amended motion would be in place, because that automatically kills this one, and we don't proceed with the second half. And should timelines run out, while they run out, if that's the wish of council. Counselor Crogg?
Speaking to a motion or amendment, which may or may not be on the table.
It is.
Actually, what I would like to see is, is that we go back to them and just say, "We need some time, we need to look at it, so we're not going to go for the other six months. But if you want to continue doing it..."
Do your homework.
Well, do your homework, but if they want to show us how powerful it is, they can run it for the next six months, come back and say, "Hey, look at what we did," then we're probably going to renew it. But unless they do. So in other words, they do it for three years.
I still believe the model that they should involve merchants and the businesses would give us a better insight of what this actually looks like, because now we're not being represented other than economic development for the municipality, for the city, but not solely for the businesses, which is the main pull on this, as it was presented by them at the regional table. And was presented, right? So I think the idea or the model that they're bringing forward hasn't been fully explored, as way they presented it originally. So I think that they have to, when I say do their homework, I think they're going to have to revisit it, and try that other model, and show us more results, and possibly get businesses that are excited about it. And then possibly, we can move forward with this.
So my point wouldn't be just to receive it, but the original, or the amended motion about sending it back to staff, and passing that information along to them, that we're not going to renew. But if they choose to come back and show us how they can involve the businesses, all of that stuff, then they're making interest.
So would you like to elaborate further on your amended motion, by including that, sending it to staff, so that they go back to Get in the Loop, and see what further they can do? Send it back to staff?
I don't know if that needs to be included in the motion and stuff, but the gist of our...
That's sufficient, then we'll leave it at that. Are you all in favor of the amended?
Do we have that over there?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm...
We're not in the loop?
No, I'm not.
So to speak?
So Counselor Butler proposed the amendment to the motion to amend to receive or refer back to staff for further information. Counselor Ross seconded it.
Okay, so all in favor of that amendment? Okay, so Carrie, all those in favor of the amended motion? Okay, so Carrie, moving along. No unfinished business, item seven, there's no council's reports. Item eight, there's no report from Counselor Butler, yes?
Sorry. Under council's reports, I just wanted it noted for the record that I did submit a council's report, but it was unfortunately censored.
Clarification on that, it was not censored. I had corresponded to you, Counselor Butler, for a request, and you never responded either yea or nay, so this is why it was not on there. It was not censored. It was a request to communicate with the chair, and we did not. So, no report from the COOTNEE rep, which would be myself, because there were no meetings, other than the steering committee, which is nothing to discuss on there. Moving on to recommendations from staff for decision. Corporate administrative department, the EOC, or the Emergency Operations Center, activation wage reimbursement policy is the subject matter. The recommendation is that council approves policy 617, Emergency Operations Center, known as EOC, activation wage reimbursement. Mover please. Counselor Crogg, seconder, Counselor Butler. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So Carrie. On to our chief financial officer, the amended 2015 Statement of Financial Information Schedule for Remuneration. Recommendation, council accepts and approves the amended schedule of remuneration for the 2015 Statement of Financial Information as presented. Mover please. Counselor Thompson, seconder. Counselor Tripp? Counselor Thompson?
It's with regret, I have to put that motion forward. I would like the additional funding.
Okay, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? So Carrie. Item C, Statement of Financial Information from our chief financial officer. Recommendation, council received the 2016 Statement of Financial Information report, and further, that council accepts and approves the statements and schedules included in the 2016 Statement of Financial Information as presented. May I have a mover? Please, Counselor Thompson, a seconder. Counselor Ross, thank you. Still hanging in there, Counselor Ross? Counselor Butler?
I know I asked the same question last year, but I just can't remember. Why are different counselors receiving different remuneration?
To our chief financial officer. Go ahead, Ms. Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's because the remuneration includes the amounts that are on the T4, plus the non-taxable portion. And that includes some taxable benefits, such as EC Medical Services Plan, and taxable life, no, sorry, taxable, sorry, AD and insurance.
Okay, so all those in favor? Anyone opposed? So Carrie. Item D, mineral claim renewal. Our chief financial officer and deputy manager of operations, recommendation is council direct staff to allow the mineral claims to lapse, and further, that council direct staff to investigate options for dedicating a park on the lands around the East Zone Reservoir. Mover please. Counselor Butler, Counselor Thompson. Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Counselor Crogg?
I want gold.
So Carrie.
What can you say?
I want the gold.
Oh, okay, so I get up.
Are you all still with us? It's 11-06 there. How are you hanging in here? Thank you. Request arising from correspondence, there are none. Information items, item 11A, Official Community Plan and Zoning Bylaw Changes for Affordable and Sustainable Housing. Our manager of development, engineering, the recommendation is council receives a memorandum regarding the official community plan and zoning bylaw changes for affordable and sustainable housing for information. May I have a mover, please? And seconder, Counselor Thompson. All those in favor? All discussion?
That's a huge item, yeah.
Go ahead, Counselor Butler.
We're just waiting. There we go. Yeah, large document. We get to revisit this maybe once a year. I think it's a really important document to revisit. I like what staff has done by including the affordable housing in here. I would actually prefer to do this in a workshop. I know we discussed the SCP earlier in the year, when we were looking at the Tim Hortons development, and thinking about how there really wasn't a lot of form and character that we could have input on at that time. And our CEO of the day said, "That would be something that you could review when we review the SCP later in the year. You could add more form and character into the highway commercial zoning, so that you'd have more say over what your community would look like in that area." And I just think it's really important that, I think, from what I've heard from people, is that they love that drive through our downtown, through Central Avenue. It's one thing that really attracts people to our community, is that first impression of driving down Central is beautiful, with the tree-lined streets. And I think that's something we could play even more, and even maybe extend the Heritage Corridor. There's a Heritage zoning section along Central as well. So I'd like to see us as a council get together, and maybe have some more input into those areas. I think what's been done so far is good, but if we're going to amend this, and go through the whole process of public consultation, I'd like to see a little bit more input from council in other areas as well. And I'm just wondering if we can take the time to have a workshop, before we actually go ahead and do this first meeting.
Your manager, Mr. Watt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the mayor, I brought up on the screen the original timeline as proposed last year for the official community plan and sustainable Grand Forks update. And as we recall, there's five major themes. During the research that was done, we have a lot of progress on theme one, environmental sustainability, and there will be another memo coming forward on that shortly. During the outreach on theme two and affordable housing, the urgency of affordable housing issues in the community came up. And at that time, we provided a memo and an update in the spring that proposed the idea of introducing some of the changes, the high-priority changes, specific to this topic, before the rest of the OCP and zoning bylaw were to come in place. And that's particularly important. There's, normally when, let's say, consultants do a large OCP update, you do the whole thing. at once and you have a whole bunch of workshops, and then you have a big document at the end. The way that the department is proceeding through this is recognizing that some high priority issues are recommended and have very focused discussion at council specifically about that topic, and that issues like form and character and the tree bylaw and what areas to protect, each also need their own discussion in depth. And I think our proposal here is to look specifically at affordable housing, identify the changes that would support the urgent needs in the community, and making those changes as, A, an amendment to the OCP currently, and repeal and replace them in the zoning bylaw. And should council wish, I've got some highlights to share on why that repeal and replacement is needed at this time.
But as I see it this evening, we're just receiving a memorandum, there's no decision being made, and I notice there's a lot of workshops planned, so before we actually do first and second reading, we've got a lot of work to do, yeah, before this goes in. Counselor Butler.
Okay, so if we're just going to focus on this one tonight, I believe that on page 168, section 4.315, 4.316, there's a repetition there that, from what I can see, needs to be removed. What page is that? 168.
What section of the item?
At the bottom right-hand corner, 4.315 and 4.316 are the same thing.
Correct. And there seems to be a bit of council. So it's a housekeeping item, I believe?
Yeah.
Okay, well noted.
I have a few more.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry. Talk amongst yourselves. Oh, okay, just a question on page 177, section 9.3.2. It talks about implementing the 2008 to 2017 sidebar plan, and I've never seen a sidebar plan, I'm just wondering what that is.
Is it going to be the other guy?
Through the mayor, Mr. Watt. That's correct, so this is, what we see here is the September 2011 Official Community Plan, and there are numerous housekeeping amendments, and what the, the point of introducing this as a memo before bringing it for first reading is a chance for a lot of them to be caught, so there's a lot of departmental review going on of both documents, and all eyes are welcome on it. So the question, if we are going to do more than a focused number of changes on the official community plan, we may want it to get in the stage of actually repealing and replacing it, because as you accumulate those changes, it becomes hard to use. I don't know, just case in point, if you look at the first page of the zoning bylaw, if you look at the number of amendments, and it's, it's my mother-in-law's garage.
Don't hate that, Mrs. Counselor.
That's what I was going to say, we can't rush it.
Okay, so I'm going to call the question. I'll ask those to the other discussions. Counselor Butler.
So then, what I understand is we're only commenting on the red sections right now? Just the amendments is all that we're really commenting on for this meeting, and then we're going to have input on this again before we go to first reading, is that correct?
Through the mayor, thank you. Yeah, so we have a proposed timeline, and I'd really like to be sensitive to the need for further discussion about this, and I don't want this at length in here. So in this, in this timeline, we, you know, put the start of the introduction for these specific changes in July. Should council wish for a workshop or a focused session just on these changes or on the process as a whole, and also allowing for further community input, I think that would also be a good analogy. I don't want to see anything of these rushed, but I'd also like to see good consideration brought forward as time reading this is moving.
Counselor Thompson.
Three to our CAO. Would it not be cleaner just to repeal and redo the bylaws instead of going through and, you know, red circling or, you know, exiting out or whatever? Both the Sustainable Community Plan and the zoning bylaw, I mean, they're dated, and it might be just, I'm thinking, better and easier for our staff if council were to consider doing that, and then they could bring forward their recommendations for new bylaws.
Where's you?
Your worship, I believe the intention staff here was to make some of the changes that were more of a priority, and then the balance of the OCP and that reviewed at a later date, I think these are just changes that are required for us to move forward now, currently if I'm wrong, Mr. Watt, but I believe that's...
Yeah, there have been so many amendments, and they're all piggybacking to one another. Eventually it gets to a point where it becomes... So Counselor Tripp.
Thank you, Mayor Crimmon. Yeah, through you, staff, I see a number of the things are under discussion, so you're hoping, my understanding is you're hoping to update this so that you've got some better things in place for some of the things that we're hoping to do in the community. What does that, how do we define, how do we look at under discussion there?
Through the mayor, thank you. So in looking especially at the zoning bylaw, there are implications to changes that are made, and there's an internal and external referral process before even the beginning of the bylaw introduction, and then there's the bylaw introduction and then a lengthy period before public hearing and then the final version. So a lot of time, people really start to pay attention once the bylaws actually introduced, and having a two-month window for consideration of those changes, I think it's valid. Currently, right now, we're in deep discussions with our building official who knows planning law very well. We're talking with our planning consultant, we're meeting daily to think about the implications and ensuring that the messages to the community are brought forward.
Thank you.
Counselor Butler.
So just one question on the red section changes. There's mention in there in different sections of zoning that for the accessory dwelling units in conjunction with the main house to either cover 40% or 50% of the actual footprint of the land, and that's in accordance with what Kelowna's doing according to the document here. So I'm just wondering if staff can comment a bit on that, where we're at now, why they feel it would be better to reduce it to 40%? And in one section of the document, it actually still said 50% for certain zoning, so if you could just explain all that a bit, that would be great.
Mr. Watt.
Through the mayor, thank you. Yeah, that's, that's an excellent discussion, and it touches on the desire to increase more affordable housing and more options through an increase in density while still retaining open space and room for trees, as I've heard commented to me, Grand Forks has room for trees. And so looking at what other communities have done, Kelowna, for instance, in their urban neighborhoods, which is similar to ours, not right downtown, but the kind of core neighborhoods, they have a 40% cap on structures, and then it goes to 50% including parking. And this is actually a pretty radical change, because I looked at some of the most built-out lots in the city that, you know, you look at them in the air photo and they basically are small houses, and even some of the highest density ones still actually, with the setbacks that are required, still have less than 50%. So what we're essentially doing is tightening it up to ensure that there will always be room, but if people have a fairly small house on a large lot, they could fit a fairly large accessory dwelling unit in the backyard of, you know, a laneway house or something similar. And I think there would be a lot of concern if we proposed a blanket policy that said, you know, 50%, 60% coverage everywhere, that would change the character of the community, there would be less room for trees. And the reason that some zones, R1 in particular, would enable 40% and some of the other ones, 50%, small lot residential in particular, they're already kind of denser configurations and could potentially accommodate some slightly higher density if we wanted to rezone in that direction.
So you're mentioning trees, but in reality, it's a green space concept, like in Kelowna, where you have a certain amount of green spaces obligatory. Okay, Counselor Tripp, then I'm going to put a cap on this.
Thank you, Mayor Crimmon. Yeah, just, just to clear up that, that one thing, so it sounds like there is, there are some options there, doesn't necessarily, everybody isn't going to necessarily fall into that 40%, but there, depending on the zoning and where they are, it could still be 50%. It just seemed to me that if you, if we are in a situation where we're wanting to see more accessory dwelling units and people have, you know, homes already established and they're maybe thinking of changing the garage or something like that over, would they still be, I mean, are they still falling into that 50%, and is that going to preclude probably a potential market that we might have? We don't, we don't want to be, you know, if we're wanting accessory dwelling units, then by limiting it down to 40%, are we taking away somebody's option to build something like that? That'd be my question.
That's a, that's a great question. I don't know if you can see, just going to put a scale on here, in terms of the scale of the city, these are, these are money-for-lots up here, and typically, the large lots like this are built, they have a house and garage and that kind of thing to maybe 10%. If we zoom in and look at a small city lot near downtown, often there's one house on one of these lots and not on the other, for instance, but let's say a consolidated city lot, this one, some of these ones are typically at 30 to 40% coverage. If someone is close to that 50% cap or that 40% cap and they wanted to convert an existing building, in accordance with the building code, of course, you know, I think the existing, the existing conforming, you're allowed to have the structures that were there as of the time of the old bylaw, but for new development interacts what's allowed to be on that point.
Thank you.
Am I incorrect in stating that a lot of communities now, municipalities are giving a lot of grace, because was there not at one point years back, 20, 24% maximum coverage? 25%?
Just to say that.
There was.
Yeah.
Back in Kelowna, because they've changed immensely now. Yeah. Counselor Hammett, and then that's...
Yes, I'd say the same thing, like, what is, do we have standard current maximum gross density? That's standard for, or is it based on percentage? Well, I guess it is, but what is the percentage at the moment? Because I know in Surrey, it used to be 25%, and that changed somewhere along the two years, and then it almost looks like some, some of the lots are like 80% now gross density, and it's hardly a green space, I'd hate to see that happen.
Are you requesting an answer?
Yeah, fair, gross density.
To Mr. Gates.
The change, look at right now, is from 50% to 40%, and to put that in context, an acre has about 45,000 square feet, which makes a quarter acre about 11,000 square feet, and so half or four percent of 11,000 square feet is still about 5,000 square feet, which you can imagine is large enough for two sizable structures, given that that is building footprint, not including a second story, if there is one.
So it's actually reducing...
But it's a tremendous impact on a smaller lot, if we, if we implement a 40%, you'd have a whole different perception on that one. Counselor Crock.
Yeah, along the lines of what Counselor Hammett was saying, and asks for two buildings on a lot, do we have the max for a building able to cover a lot? Because of the super homes and stuff, they're building on the coast, Delta and a whole bunch of other communities have gone back to look at their zoning and all of that stuff. So do we have a maximum for the first dwelling? To you, to staff.
Mr. Watt. Through the mayor, the coverage, 50% currently is the maximum size, but if you have a three-acre parcel, there's nothing stopping you from building that.
One and a half acre house.
Yeah, right, right. I know, I know the lower mainland has been doing this, and we're following and studying that in particular, the larger parcels are agriculturally valuable, so we're, we're considering if that should be adopted as well, and in particular, looking at the food security and rural character aspects of the land.
What about the tolerance of subdividing huge lots to create more density?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, the, we look carefully at the agricultural land reserve areas, the floodplain areas, and then the remaining areas of large lots, and in areas where combination of environmental factors and services support higher density, then subdivisions should certainly be considered. And so whether or not it's a subdivision to a small lot residential resoning kind of consideration, or simply where there's room for two R1s, I'm, we're doing a preliminary review right now on one of those large lots that fully supports it. I think the, the need for housing and the prescription of including that in the official community plan is what is driving all of this, because we've got data on the number of dwelling units, especially affordable dwelling units required over the next five to 10 years, and right now, the market isn't generating enough. So we're essentially looking, how can that density be increased from the broad-based community and also through the various other partnerships?
So the OCP will look at that and entertain that, encompassing that into the actual OCP eventually. Perfect. All right, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? So Carrie. Moving on to the Canadian Red Cross. Subject matter, volunteer opportunities for the community. Recommendation, council receives for information from the Canadian Red Cross regarding volunteer opportunities in the community. May I have a mover please? Counselor Butler, secondary. Counselor Thompson. All those in favor, unless there's discussion? Anyone opposed? So Carrie. Grand Forks Ultimate Club. Subject matter, application for special occasion liquor license from July 15th and 16th. Recommendation, council approves the issuing of a special occasion liquor license to the Grand Forks Ultimate Club for July 15, 2017, between the hours of 7:00 PM to midnight at the seniors hall in City Park, subject to obtaining a third-party party alcohol liability insurance, naming the city of Grand Forks as an additional insured on that policy. All event liquor providers to hold a serving at right license certificate and ICBC drinking and driving warning posters to be displayed. May I have a mover please? Counselor Thompson, secondary. Counselor Butler. Counselor Hammett.
Can I assume that this is the ultimate frisbee club?
Yeah.
It just says ultimate club. Clarification.
Yes. To one of the gentlemen on staff, Mr. Watt or Mr. Gates.
Frisbee is a trademark, so it is the ultimate club.
The ultimate club. One quick question, in the recommendation or the subject matter, it says July 15th and 16th, but in the actual recommendation or the motion, it only mentions July 15th. So why is that a typo or...
Through the mayor, the evening of the special event, the party is just on the Saturday night, and the event isn't seeking a special event liquor license for the Friday night.
Okay, just... Okay, so the event is a two-day event, the liquor portion is only the 15th. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? So Carrie. Next item, Stanlock, its email correspondence regarding concerns of council, regional chamber of commerce, and the downtown business association. The recommendation is council receives for information, email correspondence from Stanlock regarding concerns of council regarding... concerns of council regarding regional chamber of commerce and the Downtown Business Association. May I have a mover please? Counselor Crogg. Secondar Counselor Hammett. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Moving to the bylaws, there are none. And now we move on to the late item. Of which, there was an amendment to include my verbal statement regarding the city's position on a complaint issue. It is as follows. My office received a letter of complaint from Mr. James Wilson in regards to alleged defamatory statements made by two counselors at the June 19th council meeting. Because Mr. Wilson has sought legal counsel, there will be no discussion or debate on this matter. As mayor and CEO of the corporation, a letter of response was sent to Mr. Wilson stating the corporation's position on the matter. The letter reads as follows. Dear Mr. Wilson, in response to your emails sent to myself on Tuesday, June 20th, please be assured that the city of Grand Forks does not agree with, accept, or acknowledge the statements made about you at the June 19th, 2017 council meeting. In this regard, if you have ongoing concerns with the statements, we suggest you take this up directly with the counselors who made the statements. And the city would be happy to make a public statement at its next council meeting on Monday, June 26, 2017, advising that as a corporation, it does not accept or agree with the statements made about you. Sincerely, Mayor Conrad. And that is it. We do not need a motion on that. It's just a statement. We move on now to question period from the public and the media. May I please advise that the subject matter must be contained within the items on the agenda this evening? Go ahead, Lady Impr.
Uh, my colleague. Thank you, your worship.
Yeah, they're being mic. Yeah, they're being mic.
I'm awake, I'm, I'm awake.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Through you, perhaps through Ms. Heinrich. I just am seeking, uh, I guess confirmation that, uh, the 90-day evaluation period is up and if an announcement is being made that she is formally our CAO, dropping the interim.
Your worship, uh, at the June 19th, uh, in camera, there was a, a resolution that council considered and, uh, we've extended my interim for an additional 90 days, which was reused from in camera. Uh, in that time period, we'll be likely looking at a possible contract for council consideration in that time period.
Thank you.
To the gentleman in front of the mic.
Les Johnson, GFTV. I had a very long discussion on getting the loop, I kind of dropped out of that a little bit, but I am curious. It says it would be a renewal, six months renewal. Does that mean that we've been, as a city, participating in this and if we were, would we pay any money for that?
Yes, apparently there was, as one of our managers had mentioned, there was a 5,000 introductory fee for the first, I believe, yeah, for the first six months. Renewal for the second six months would have been 7,500 and the anticipation of 15,000 for the years to come.
Okay. One more question, uh, mineral leases, you're dropping, sorry, the mineral leases, you're dropping the mineral leases? I understand from what I've read in the agenda that that's been done because the cost of actually keeping a mineral lease without actually doing something has gone up. The reason for having those leases to protect the city's property, that hasn't gone away. Am I correct in that?
Mr. Gates.
There are a number of protections in place for our infrastructure that are inherent in any, um, when you own the land above the, the mineral tenure. The primary reason for the mineral claim was for this lake pot. And, uh, because it is now a mineral reserve, there is no longer any reason to have a mineral claim. In fact, it is encompassed in that mineral reserve.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Concerns? Hearing no, hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn? Counselor Hammett. Thank you, Counselor Ross.
Go to bed.
All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned.